Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of the Brisbane City Council, January 5th, 2017. We'll start off with a report from the closed session.
Madam Mayor and Council, the council did meet in closed session to consider the claim of a Seon Misie, and based on that, the council recommended and voted unanimously to deny the claim, and the claimant would be so notified.
Thank you. Now, we shall call the meeting to order. If you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption.
Second.
I'd like to just add, I've been advised by the city manager that there will be a presentation following this adoption by Public Works, just talking about the upcoming storm preparation.
You know what, Clark, I know you made that motion, I just remembered. You know, we have some members of the public that are here regarding the music festival, so that's item number nine under new business, and I was wondering if it would be okay with the council to have that item be moved up front?
Oral communications, number one, after oral communications, number one?
Yeah, if that'd be okay.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so that's item nine, new business, the Mountain Festival?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll move that up after oral communications.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll take, there was a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, oral communications, number, oh, excuse me, presentation first by Public Works.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pretend, council members, good evening. You may have heard there's a storm coming in, so the city manager asked that we give you a brief presentation on some of the preparations that have been going on. Some of the really obvious ones that you've seen is we've resupplied the sandbag stockpile that we have out here at City Hall, and if you've been tracking social media and our blogs lately, we've put those notices out there to our citizens, and we've also put the notices out there to them that the new SMC Ready website is available to you, and we're certainly always encouraging people to take as many individual preparedness actions as they can, and also to sign up for the SMC Alert system that you can find on that SMC Ready page, because that really is the messaging that we primarily do if we have a major event and we need to get that information out to people. Hidden a little more back in the shadows, the things that we are doing is for this weekend, we're gonna have two, two-man Public Works crews on call, so that if we do have the high-wind, high-rain events that are gonna be out there, we're gonna be able to respond to that. We've communicated the extent of the winds, the rains, the direction of the winds to our marina tenants to help them prepare with it to the best of their abilities. We've communicated, obviously, with the police department. There are some real serious conditions, it really is possible that on Sunday morning we could possibly overtop areas like Sierra Point Parkway adjoining the lagoon and some of the low-lying areas out at Sierra Point, so we're gonna make sure we keep an eye on that, and if we have to do road closures, we will. Probably even further in the background on that is I've been participating in daily phone calls with the National Weather Service, and so to give you a thumbnail sketch of what the latest information those meteorologists think is that it's gonna be cold tonight, continuing through to tomorrow morning. Luckily, because we're so close to the bay and we're influenced by that bay temperature, we don't think we're gonna drop into the freezings, so unlike some of the areas that are in the nine-county bay area that don't have that warming trend from the bay or from the ocean, they're gonna have freezing in road, and freezing and icy road conditions tomorrow, so it's gonna be a real challenge for them. It is anticipated that there'll be a little bit of rain Friday night, but the real party is gonna come in late Saturday afternoon through Sunday morning and a little bit into Monday. There is an atmospheric river that's inbound, and right now, it's bullseying in on Santa Clara and Monterey Counties. That's where it's expected to landfall. Be thankful you're not in the mountains. The highest reaches, the mountains in Santa Cruz, are anticipating to get 12 inches of rain in less than about 12 hours, so that's just really, really tremendous. The caveat here, though, is that these are meteorological models that we're working on, and they are subject to change, they're subject to refinement. There is a slight to possible change where that atmospheric river could hit landfall a little further north, and we could get more rain than even that. So right now, we're anticipating, say, between Friday night and Monday morning, getting about three and a quarter inches of rain, so that's not too bad over two and a half days, but if you think about the big rain we just had Wednesday night that happened overnight, that's two to three times as much rain as happened that night. Okay? Sustained winds on Saturday, we're looking at in the 20 mile per hour, and Sunday, we're looking at in the 30 mile per hour. Again, there's places to be thankful you're not at. Half Moon Bay along the coast is looking at having sustained winds of 45 miles an hour, so that Sunday's gonna be a really bad day to drive your RV down Highway 1. Those high-profile vehicles are gonna suffer quite a bit. And then the last thing I want to note to you, kind of rolling it even further back, the council will recall that probably about a year, year and a half ago, it was really the city of Brisbane that was the initiating force in establishing a county-wide Public Works mutual aid agreement, and we're now at the point, we're all 21 agencies in the county are signatory to that, so one of the other things we've been doing is coordinating with all of the agencies, with all those zone coordinators, making sure that people have the appropriate phone numbers, that people have appropriate resources, so that if any of the signatory agencies really do get slammed by the events inbound, that the other agencies are gonna be prepared to respond to them. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Sounds like El Nino was off by a year.
Sir, yeah, this is, this is a lot of rain coming in. Unfortunately, the bad news with a lot of the rain coming in at one time is you just had a snowfall, and so then this heavy, heavy atmospheric river comes in and it hits these mountains and it melts the snow, and then the snow goes into these reservoirs that are already flooded, so we start to see some of those change that we've talked about here many times, when you talk about what's gonna happen as a result of climate change and greenhouse gases, where it really changes the pattern in which we receive rain, and in this case, it really changes the pattern in us not getting enough of it to hit a snow and to stay a snow, because that's where we store so much of our water throughout this area, is we store well over half of it up a snow, and then it self-releases as it melts, and but when it hits us in these conditions, and then it just flows out to the bay, it's essentially wasted for our purposes of trying to reuse it.
Yeah. I think since Ray Miller's here tonight, he'll probably recall, as I do, I mean, we've had, you know, a few wet Decembers, and then, you know, and I'm talking about the last couple years, then it just kinda dissipated, and the winter was actually pretty dry, relatively dry. But I always, and I told my grandkids this, that when it rains on January 1st, we're gonna have a wet year, and it's always been that way, so.
You heard it here first.
It rained January 1st, so.
Thank you.
I have a question, Lori. Thank you, Randy, for the report. I'm not sure the exact year, but, you know, there was, maybe it was in the early 80s when we had some flooding?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, okay, so, you know, going back to 1982, I mean, this area here, I mean, people had boats and things like that.
That's because the water tank blew the line and emptied the water tank down.
Okay, okay, so it wasn't a rain-related?
And it went high tide, it was a combination, it was a perfect form of a combination of things.
Okay, so, and then there was some mitigation work that was done to remedy that type of storm condition, so with that in place, I mean, we shouldn't expect those types of conditions with this storm.
Well, we're always hopeful that we're not gonna have really super saturated soils that are gonna just become so laden with water that they wanna come down the mountain, that they wanna come down Glen Parkway. It's hard to predict, the weather's been a little bit interesting, we've kinda gotten the ground wet, and then kinda let it dry out a little bit, so those tend to be good conditions. Bad conditions tend to be when it's really, really dry and it's baked for a long time, and then just a whole bunch of water hits it, because then the scarp, that's all the soil that's on top of the underlying bedrock face, just says, hey, I'm too heavy, I no longer have a friction coefficient with the rock underneath me, and so here I go to wherever I end up. So I don't think those conditions are gonna happen. The conditions that concern me a little more are, we're gonna have, coincidentally, a very high rain event and a very high tide at 7:30 in the morning on Sunday, and on top of that, you're gonna have high winds, and the problem that the high winds cause is that as they add to the tide as it comes in, it creates what's referred to as a storm surge, and what happens is that storm surge starts to blow towards the shore, and as it's blowing towards the shore, it's lifting the level of the tide even higher than it would be, and what that does then is it occludes the outlets of your storm drains that are trying to dump into the bay and that are trying to dump into the river, so that just keeps backing things up. So the lower portions of town, you can potentially see storm drains, it's like, I'm done, I'm full, and I've got nowhere for the water to go, so there's always that possibility when you, when you have that real trifecta of bad things happening with high wind, high rain, and really, really high tides. We just about had that happen in December when the king tides were in, I was, I was out, this is what I do in my spare time on weekends, I go out and drive Sierra Point Parkway and see how it's doing during high tide to make sure we're not flooding it, but we missed that by about six to 12 inches, and I think part of the reason was really we didn't have the winds associated with it, the rains on those days were just rain, they weren't, they weren't having squalls along with them. So we'll see, we're not, they're not always completely predictable. I think the good news is that we tend to be in a better situation than many, many of the other cities. We don't have the really, really large creeks coming down that have flood gauges. If you go and you look at, there's a, there's a California Rivers and Flood High Watch, I'm not saying the website correctly now, but it's one of the websites that I have bookmarked that I go and look, and I look and see what rivers are doing around us. We don't have any of those even listed on their maps, so it's nice to not be in that condition of saying, oh, okay, you know, our colleagues here are gonna be flooded, you know, like, for instance, you mean even not, not on the river, but most of you have driven down through South San Francisco, and where it becomes Airport Boulevard, and as it dips underneath that roadway right before you get out to where you can exit 101, or you can turn left and go over to Costco, that floods. I, I, I got 10 bucks that says that flood Sunday morning, just, just the nature of the beast, it's where its conditions are, so, but I think we'll.
Those high tides did happen.
We'll try and be okay.
Did happen in 97.
As well, right?
Yeah, and it backed up a bit, but it wasn't too bad, you know, down there by the hardware store.
Okay.
It flood out in San Bruno Avenue, but it was nowhere near like 82. Eighty-two, the mountainside in Costanos Canyon came down.
Right, exactly.
Clogged all the waterways, you know, in addition, logs went through people's houses and all kinds of weird stuff happened, so, you know, but 97 was pretty bad, and, you know, waterways in Costanos Canyon got clogged, and, you know, it started breaching over the road and everything like that, and created a waterfall, but nowhere near like 82, didn't have trees going through houses and stuff like that, so, and it did, you know, back up, but it wasn't flooded flooded, you know, it's just like, ah, this is big. So it was okay.
Bit of a mess, it's certainly a bit of a mess if you're the business or you're the residents that's on the receiving end, and we completely understand, and I'm not trying to downplay that, it's a hardship if it hits you.
Yeah, it is, but it didn't even go into the hardware store, because I happened to be there at its work point, so.
Madison, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for you, Randy. Remember two years ago in December, there was like Stormageddon, and 101 was flooded in multiple different parts, San Francisco, and then also, like by Oyster Point over there?
Yep, exactly.
Do you, do we end, and people couldn't get to work, I remember that day, it was insane. Do, do you know if it's anticipated to be that level, worse, less? Do you have any idea of comparison to that, which is kind of a recent example of a really big storm that we've had?
So I, my understanding is that the flooding that happened on US 101 southbound, particularly in the vicinity of Oyster Point Boulevard, was because there were some storm drains in catch basins that had fallen off the maintenance map, so they were clogged and they were full, and so they weren't being discharged, so I don't think that that's gonna happen again this year, because I've observed Caltrans cleaning those. Is it gonna be that same level of rain event, and is it gonna be the usual places that always flood? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, so residents should all be prepared to stay home and pick up your sandbags if necessary from City Hall. Okay, so moving on, thank you, Randy, to oral communications, number one. We have one slip, I'm not sure if I've got this pronounced right, is it Alec or Ally Sobczak?
Headwriting, Ally.
Ally, okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Sobczek, I'm here representing Hip Housing, and on behalf of Hip, I would like to thank you, the Honorable Mayor, and the rest of the council, for your continued support of our organization. The need for affordable housing is dire, the average one-bedroom apartment in the county is now over $2,600 a month. If you're not familiar with us, Hip Housing specializes in providing creative affordable housing solutions to nearly 1,400 individuals in the county each year, and we would not be able to accomplish this without your support. As a token of our appreciation and a reminder of our partnership throughout the year, I'd like to present the council with Hip Housing's new 2017 calendar, which you might have, or they're waiting for you. This is the 15th calendar that we've made, so they might be familiar to some of you. It's filled with information on Hip Housing's affordable housing programs, as well as children's artwork from students in K to 5th grade. Each child drew a picture of home and then had to answer the question, what my home means to me. We ask that you help us spread the word about our home-sharing program, which for many people searching, is their last chance of finding affordable housing in the county. Right now, we have five people seeking housing for every one person providing a bedroom in their home, so to encourage people to have a room, to encourage people who have a room to rent out in their home, we do have a $250 incentive that we can provide to them after 90 days of, of housing their tenant. So please let your contacts know about our valuable resource, and feel free to let us know if you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Ray Miller, and this is regarding elections, which is on the agenda, so, so are you? Okay, so we'll wait until that item comes forward, and then Emmett Cunningham also on elections, so we'll wait until that comes forward. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the item which has been moved up, this is item nine, new business, receive an update from the Mountain Festival Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Staff report, please.
Sure. The ad hoc subcommittee met on December 21st and discussed having a family music-oriented event on either July 1st or July 8th. The conversation started off with it being in combination with a running event sponsored by the Excelsior Running Club. I have since been told by the Excelsior Running Club that they would like to do their event on July 1st, so if the city would like to do it in conjunction with them, we would need to make sure that our event would be on July 1st, not on July 8th. Just to give you a little bit of an update on what Excelsior is planning on doing, they are looking at doing a 50K race, a 25K race, and a half marathon. Those would be run on San Bruno Mountains, starting at the park, running up Visitation, winding its way up to the, up to the mountain. The 50K would do two loops on the mountain, and the 25 and the half marathon would do somewhat of a one or a half of a loop, depending on which race it is, and then a little later in the day, they would do a more fun, 5K fun run on Crocker Trail. Just to let you know, not that I could ever do one, but a 50K takes about seven hours to run. If it was me, it would probably be two or three days.
With a car.
With a car. Thanks, Clay, you are so positive. Then the conversation went to the discussion of the music, what would, what could go along with that, and there was a conversation about having a music festival or something to that extent. There were three ideas that were discussed, one would be more of just a kickoff for the concerts in the park, having a higher-quality band than we are normally able to afford. We would anticipate that with a band that has a higher quality, they would have a mailing list that people would come from around the area, probably around the county to come and see, and we would anticipate that could attract somewhere between 500 to 1,000 people in our community park. A second idea was to create more of a music festival. A music festival would have more than just a single band playing, but might have a couple of bands, and might have a local band and a couple of other bands, and if we get a couple of different types of bands that have followings, that could attract somewhere between 1,000 to 2,000 people into the city. And then the third one was a, more of a music and family-oriented event, so a little bit longer, have a little bit more high-quality bands, do more of, some of the kinds of things that we do for Day in the Park, where you have some kind of entertainment for the rest of the family, and that could, you know, attract between 2,000 and 5,000 people, and possibly grow to bigger if we want to continue something like that. The cost for a higher-level band than we normally get is about $6,000, is what the group was discussing, that would be one way to do it. Normally, on our concerts in the park, we have bands in the range of 1,000 to 2,000, and I know this year they're going to be, the Parks and Recreation Commission will probably come forward and ask for a little bit of a bump in that budget to try and get a little bit better bands, we've been hearing that at the Parks and Recreation Commission. For the, if we're going to do something where we're doing more of it just a kickoff for the Friday night, we would ask the Lions to do maybe, as opposed to just the hot dogs that they normally do, to do more of their traditional Day in the Park kind of event, where they would sell hamburgers, hot dogs, tri-tips, which of course would bring everybody out. The second idea would, where we get a couple of more, maybe a regionally, a regional band and a better locally-known band, the cost of that could be between 15 and $20,000. We would need to, obviously, a little bit more cost, because we'd have event coordination costs, event day expenses, above and beyond what we normally have for concerts in the park, and also, obviously, more cleanup as we get more people. We also, maybe as we get more people, we'd be able to attract more food trucks, as well as the Lions Club. As you know, for the Day in the Park, we were able to have our food truck that was there sell out, plus the Lions Club sold out. Also, if we were to do something like that, where it would be a longer period of time, maybe a small beer garden, where we invite some of the microbreweries around the area to come in and participate. And then the last one would be more of an all-day kind of an event, the discussion centered around more of a Barbary Coast theme, you know, 1890s San Francisco, there we would have, obviously, food trucks, microbrewery, tasting area, arts and crafts vendors, more of that kind of Millbrae Art and Wine Festival look, more of the Half Moon Bay Pumpkin Festival look, not as big at this point. The cost, depending on the bands and the event coordinator, staff time, staging, and everything else, could cost up to about $60,000, and obviously, the cost could be offset by charging for parking, for sponsorships, possibly admission fees for attendees and vendors. We've also talked about maybe having additional add-on to the race cost to have them be able to pay for tickets for the event and for the Lions Club, to give the Lions Club a number of people who they know are going to use it. And then at the end of the report, I wrote about kind of what the, the purpose of the three different events are, and they all have slightly different purposes. So, you know, if you're gonna do something where it's a concert in the park at a little bit higher level, we're not gonna get very much exposure from the, throughout the county, but it will probably be something more geared towards the residents of town to have them have an experience that they don't normally have in a concert in the park. If we do the second event, where we do a couple of bands, would be trying to create a moderate level of exposure for the city, bringing in more people, it would test the waters as far as how many people we think the park could hold, and how the, how that would work, the, you know, working with the police, working with traffic control to see how the flow of traffic would be on something like that, and then third event would be trying to bring more of a regional event into the city, you know, and hopefully it could grow over time, maybe not quite as big as the Half Moon Bay and, you know, Pacifica Fox Fest, because those attract about 100,000 for their weekends, I don't think we're looking for something that would attract that many, but, you know, if we can do something where it can grow over time, and maybe be a two-day event, and attract 30,000 to 40,000 over a period of both days, and see, you know, that might be what we would be looking for, to try and get some, some notoriety for the city, and to, you know, help our city, you know, be put on the map for some of the businesses in town and like that. So we're looking at this point for a direction from the city councils to what kind of event you're looking for, and, you know, how much you want us to spend, and what kind, you know, what would be the elements that you're looking for in this event. And Madison and Cliff were the subcommittee members from the city council, along with members of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Can I add something to that? Just for, for more information, we discussed different locations, too, so the grander-scale festival that we were talking about that could pull in thousands of people, my understanding would be located at the Marina, which could handle that versus our community park, so I think it's important when we're discussing this to, to understand that we're not all talking about the park. Did I interpret that right, Cliff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, so, so just keep that, keep that in your mind, because it might be hard to envision, you know, 5,000 people at the community park, and that's not what we were thinking, we were thinking at the Marina, so we're just trying to figure out the extent, and, you know, that may not necessarily coincide with a race, that could be something entirely separate. So we talked about these sorts of things be, being combined, like the race and then, say, a concert in the park kickoff on a weekend day, and then as we're talking about a larger-scale event, we realized that maybe they might be two separate things, one happening on July 1st, and the other one, obviously, taking a few years to kind of plan and sort out, so.
Yeah, 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 you know, in regards to that, that bigger plan, yeah, we thought, well, maybe we should reach out to, was it Miramont Event, or some, yeah, some company that helps organize large-scale events, and just give us a, kind of a layout of what, or if it was feasible for Brisbane to do something like that out at the Marina. So, you know, still in the, in that exploratory type of perspective, but, you know, after the, our meeting, Madison, I was talking with Teresa Jimenez, and Teresa Jimenez is on our Park and Rec Commission, and she's also a big Cajun zydeco dancer, in fact, her and Karen, some other town folks are at the salsa dancing tonight, they're big dancers, and, and so she's very well-connected with that, that community, and so one of the bands that she sees, I forgot the name of it, but the, the guy that is the lead person in the band, his name is Andre, and he's played here in Brisbane concerts.
Andre Theory?
Yeah, there you go, yeah, and so.
Zydeco.
Mm-hmm. And so, yeah, he's played at the 23 Club, and Set Mile House, and, and so, you know, we were talking, well, you know, maybe, you know, reaching out to that group and having someone who specializes in, in doing festivals, you know, a festival promoter might bring in some bands and, and kind of run the, the event. You know, then I reached out to one of our locals, Jimmy Leslie, and we were chatting and, over the weekend, and we walked down to the park and walked around, and, I mean, Jimmy, you know, he's, he's a major contributor, and I think founder of Guitar Fish Music Festival, and so, I mean, we've got, we've got some local talent, you know, that's got some expertise, too, and so I asked Jimmy to, to come to the meeting tonight and just kind of, you know, just kind of lay out a little vision of, you know, what, you know, might be a, kind of a low-key type music festival on, on July 1st, kind of tied a little bit to the race, and, you know, he's here, and, you know, and he's got his buddy Michael with him, and I thought, well, okay, maybe allow them to come on up and, and talk to the council.
I had a question before, before Jimmy comes up, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
In regards to the Marina, what were you thinking, what was the thought around that, because?
So if we were talking about like a, a big-scale event, like, say, something they do at Half Moon Bay, or Millbrae Art and Wine, we envision that, it would make sense to have that be at the Marina, because it's easy access on and off the freeway, and there's more parking, so we were thinking of that being there, and so if that were the case, then these would end up being probably two separate events, because the race is obviously centered on the mountain, which is separated, so a long time ago, just for some background, when I was on the Park and Rec Commission, we had discussed wanting to do a big festival like what a lot of cities in our county are known for, and we thought that it would be a great way for the city to drive in a revenue that we could put aside for a rainy day for recreation, because oftentimes, when you have a recession, usually recreation is the first thing to go. Thankfully, in our city, recreation has always been something that's been a priority and been very important, but we had thought of that idea just to, to put some money away, and, but then when we were talking, we realized that these other cities that do it, they're not really put on by their city, they're put on by independent companies or the Chamber of Commerce, so really just kind of floating ideas around and talking, and trying to understand how other cities do it so successfully.
Just, just one thing, I don't know if you thought about this, but the Marina, most of the contiguous property that's open, other than the parking, is actually private property, so, you know, I, and I don't know how something like that works, because it's not city-owned property, and I'm not sure a private owner would want thousands of people on there. And I'm not sure a private owner would want thousands of people on their property with liability issues or whatever. I don't know how that would happen. To me, I always thought, you know, if we had something, that we'd have it in Brisbane, but you could utilize the parking at the Marina and utilize shuttles, you know, so I mean, that, just to give you feedback.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We would definitely think about that, you know, if, uh.
Yeah, I mean, th- those are details that, you know, is the Marina that, you know, if, if you're thinking about something on a, a grander scale that it's not gonna be a city parcel, it's gonna be private parcel, and I'm not sure private owners, you know, would wanna.
I, I think the committee was really talking about, you know, maybe starting off in Brisbane a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
In town, and then as, you know, if in fact the trade happened with Opus for that parcel, to get the, uh, restaurant parcel back, then to use that restaurant parcel as a, as a possible location. Or at the moment to use some.
The park is actually bigger than that parcel though. That, that's my point. The park is bigger than that parcel. I mean, but you ha- you know, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, square footage-wise, so.
Well, those are good questions. Terry, did you have anything before we allow Jimmy to speak?
So, as far as the running weight race through Excelsior, um, was the zippy race a success as far as fundraising or, um, a financial moneymaker? That was the last running race we did, and that seemed that the people ran and left. They didn't seem to want to be in Brisbane or stay in Brisbane, and so I'm wondering why you feel that a running race is something that would be beneficial for Brisbane when it doesn't seem to be something that keeps people here.
Yeah, now, y- you know, whenever you, you, you start something, you know, it takes a while to build the momentum, and so, um, you know, now we've run the, they don't call it the zippy anymore, they call it reach for a star five K out at the Marina. Still the same race. And, uh, you know, last year, I think we, we, um, the, the club gave about, I think close to two thousand dollars to, um, the school district for, for sports. So, you know, we started off, you know, with a few hundred dollars, and now it's up to a couple thousand, and, you know, and part of that is, you know, getting sponsorships from, uh, or sponsors from, um, you know, different companies. So, with this race, um, because it's, um, a longer race, you can charge more money, there's more margin in there. Um, you know, part of, when you do a fifty K race, you have to provide food for people, and you build that into the costs of the application, and, and so the, the idea was to, um, just, you know, charge upfront the cost of the food. Say twelve dollars and on their bib, they'd have a little ticket and they'd bring that to the Lions Club booth. And they get whatever they want, and Lions Club at the end of the, the festival turns in all their tickets and the, the club writes them a check. Um, you know, if there was a beer garden, you know, you could, you could, uh, put in, um, a beer. And that, uh, you know, best BTO, if they were gonna do the beer garden, turn in all the tickets. Uh, you know, if you had a festival, uh, you know, you can build in, say if it was, the cost of the event was twenty bucks, you build in the twenty dollars into that, the cost of the race. Because, uh, these races are, you know, and, you know, the low end for a fifty K is sixty-five dollars. You know, high end is a hundred and fifty dollars. So, we're probably looking at about a hundred dollars. Uh, and there's certain chunk of money that, that goes, you know, that you have your upfront costs and you have to cover those things. But, um, when you have a, a location like San Bruno Mountain, I mean, that, that place is just such a gem, it's dynamite, you know, location, and, and so runners from, you know, the area would want to run in that race, and they're willing to pay that, that amount of money. Um, so, we're hoping to get, you know, somewhere between a hundred and two hundred runners and, and then gradually build it up over time. Uh, you know, I've spoken with, uh, folks from Mountain Watch about the race, and they, they've, they've talked about having a, a, a race on the mountain, and, and so, um, we'd like for Mountain Watch to be the beneficiary and, um, you know, and share in the, the proceeds that, uh, would be generated from, from the race.
But do these two events really sound compatible with a race event and a music event? They seem very disjointed.
You know, the, the intent is to, to run them separately, that one shouldn't depend upon the other. Though, if you had a music festival and you already incorporated the, the cost of, of entry into the, into the festival, into the, the cost to go into the race, you know, and someone would finish, say, the half marathon, and I know, uh, Stuart was talking about seven hours for a fifty K, and yes, some people, it'll take that long. But some people will run the fifty K somewhere between four and five hours, and some people run the half marathon between two and three hours. And so, you know, they'll fination and they'll get their freebies, but in order to get their meal, they'd have to go into the, in, into the, the, the festival area. And then so, the festival folks are gonna get paid because to get in, you gotta give the ticket. Um, to get your food, you gotta get the ticket. And so, um, it's a different, it's a different animal than just a five K race where you come, you, you get your freebies, and then you leave. Th- this is, you know, in, in a sense, keeping people there for a while because they're gonna wanna eat, they're gonna wanna relax, they're gonna, you know, drink a beer or whatever. Um, and so, yeah, so that's, that, that's, that's how you would create that type of environment. Have more like an expo, uh, type of feel than just a regular race.
And I think that's why we, um, wa- talked about adding a band. And I thought if you called it, you know, um, community or, uh, Concerts in the Park Kickoff, like a, uh, celebration for the start of the season, our community members would, um, have more of an idea of what that means. So, I can see more of our town understanding and coming um, versus being a, an event that's a little bit foreign and they don't really know what it's all about because it's connected to the race. But if you call it the, uh, Concert in the Park Kickoff, then I think that, uh, people in our community know what that means. And so, we want to keep the racers around, but we also want it to be obviously an event for our community, that our community is inspired to come to and enjoys. Um, we also talked about with a bigger band, they could also have a mailing list too, to bring some people in. Um, so, and, and we thought it might be interesting to test out a weekend day during the day to have music, because traditionally we've had them in the evenings and you can start getting cold, um, you know, in August with that fog rolling over San Bruno Mountain. So, we just thought i- if you call it that, the community would better understand what it was about and more likely to, to participate. And I think that's the whole point, is we wanna use an event like this race to help fund or finance more things that we can provide to our community that our community will enjoy. Not just having it be just for this one group of people that are coming from outside of town. You know, use that to create more for, for our residents here. So, and just kind of bring all that together in one place. So, that's kind of how I interpreted some of the, some of the suggestions that we had made and why we had made those.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I mean, I, I, I know running races, yeah, and, and, and putting them on. When it comes to music festivals, I don't know anything about that. And so, you know, that's why we're, we're reaching out to folks, you know, like Jimmy and Michael to, you know, to have their expertise to be part of, you know, potentially be part of, of that day. Um, but, you know, one of the main reasons why you do a race is to, i- you know, and bringing the race here is, is to, to raise money for our nonprofits, right? Lions, FS BTO, San Bruno Mountain Watch. So, um, you know, and, and showcase our town too, to the outside world. So.
I s- I see that. They just seem very strange bedfellows.
Uh, the, yeah, you know, um, I, I hear what you're saying.
I mean, out of, out of the, out of the Marina, when we've had the races, um, besides having traffic issues to get to the Marina, you know, at, from seven-thirty or six-thirty in the morning till nine, the only thing that we see after nine-thirty is the paint that they've left on the road that stays there for six months.
Uh, well, that's not our, our running club. We don't put paints down.
Okay, somebody.
Yeah, well, I know, so I know, I think he just, you know, you know, I think he.
I mean, but we just didn't have.
You know, I, I hear what you're saying, but our club would never do that, okay? So, don't make the, you know, accusation that, 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 that's what we're gonna do.
I don't know what club or whose race it was that put the, the arrows and numbers and lanes on the roadways. Um, but i- it, it's not that in the community, we saw much where people stayed in the area on those, on those days.
You know, and when you run a race like that, there's no reason to stay. You organize a race like this, there's a reason to stay, because you wanna get your food and you wanna watch, you know, these bands play, because you paid for it already. Now, you could leave if you want, and that's fine, but, you know, if you want those things, then you gotta go into the, into the festival. And, and, you know, and then hopefully you stay and enjoy yourself.
We won't know unless we try, right? It's one of those things that.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to see you try, you know? Being a runner myself, you know, that. What's so funny? Okay.
So, I have a question.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and I think it'd be a good idea to utilize the park, you know, and I, I like the idea of it and, and the bands, and also make it, you know, where our local businesses, restaurants and sandwich shops and stuff are participants in it, you know, that it actually brings in business for them too for that day, you know, to have a really good day, you know, big overflow of folks, you know, as long as it's manageable, you know, something where, you know, maybe shutting down Old County Road and utilizing that whole area that way, and, you know, I, I could see it working.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, um, since we have Jimmy and Michael here, maybe it'd be nice to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I was gonna call them up. I just had a couple of questions myself and comments, so. Um, so you said that you've reached out, or you, you've, you've looked at models that other cities have done, um, like Millbrae and Half Moon Bay. Um, have you, and you mentioned that they have, um, it's not the city that runs the program, but an independent, uh, company. So, have you reached out to those cities at this point to find out what model they use and how the city benefits from it as well financially?
Um, the staff did reach out to the cities. We reached out to Miramar Productions. They have told us that they are not interested in working with us. They have their plate full already with others. So, if that was the direction city council wanted us to go, we would need to find a different event production company. Um, as, you know, as was said, that the cities themselves really benefit more from a sales tax perspective.
Okay.
Because, you know, if you, you know, what I've heard is that Millbrae Art and Wine Festival, you kind of, you know, for a number of those businesses along that strip, it's really makes their ear.
Right, so that's why I'm wondering, um, whether if we have it out at Sierra Point eventually, if it's a larger festival, how is it that we will still get the local businesses to benefit? Because unless they have food trucks out there or tables set up, you know, how are they gonna get the food and whatever else they're trying to do?
Right, I mean, if it's out there, it's harder to get the local businesses to benefit. But, you know, if it's put on by the city, the city would be able to benefit from whatever revenues were raised by the festival.
Okay.
So, that would be, you know, a different, it would be a slightly different model than other cities have used. Um, as Madison said, you know, when it was being looked at by the Parks and Recreation Commission, um, it was being looked at, you know, during, you know, at the tail end of the recession, recognizing that when the next recession hit, you know, would there be a way to continue to fund Parks and Recreation programs? And if you started a festival, you know, four or five years before the next recession, you get it built up, you get people expecting, you know, ready to go to it every year, you then create an ability potentially to fund a portion of your Parks and Recreation program from the, you know, from the proceeds of the festival. And I think that would be a different, you know, it's a slightly different model than other cities do, but it may be a model that's, um, suits us better since our, you know, we don't have quite the same kind of a Chamber of Commerce as some of the city, the cities, um, you know, we don't have a pumpkin festival city in the same way that Half Moon Bay does with our farmers and the other kinds of businesses that, um, are involved in that. I mean, our, our business community is different. It's a very robust community. Um, you know, I'm very, you know, as a finance director, I'm very happy with the business community we have, but it's a lot less person-to-person retail and more business-to-business retail. And, you know, from that perspective, we wouldn't really be seeing, you know, a lot of the business-to-business retail wouldn't benefit from any kind of festival. Um, so, you know, from that perspective, having something in the park with smaller scale where people can walk up and down visitation, that would help. It would get recognition for businesses, businesses, you know, people would say, oh, okay, you know, this, they have these kinds of businesses, I can come back in a different time. Um, you know, it's that, but you don't, we don't have the same kind of gift shops that you see in Half Moon Bay. So, you don't have that kind of idea. So, I think, you know, if we were to do it, we would want to look at a slightly different model where the city was probably more involved in it than in other cities.
Okay, great. Well, I like the idea of getting the runners to stay longer. You know, I've been to those races and I know it's like, they're over and they leave. You know, by the time I'm showing up to start my walk with the kids in the stroller, the, the runners are on their way out pretty much. So, um, I think it's great to find a way to, to get them to stay and to bring music into it. I like the combination. So, with that, um, I'd like to invite, um, Jimmy up here to say a few words.
All right, thank you very much for inviting me here. I'm learning a lot right here on the fly, just listening to this discussion. And, uh, I very much appreciate being a part of the, uh, of the Brisbane community. I moved here, uh, twenty-ten. And I moved here specifically because of, of music. Jim Campolongos, the guy whose house I still rent, um, and he's a great, uh, country jazz guitar player who lives in New York. And, uh, so my, my experience with Brisbane, well, first a, a couple of other things. I guess basically I'm a, I'm a musician, I'm a singer, a, a writer and a, and a guitar player. And mainly I'm the acoustic editor at Guitar Player Magazine, which is right on the other side of the mountain over in San Bruno, right? And so, I, for them, not only write the stories, uh, I brought an issue just to show you guys. Buddy Guy and Warren Haynes and Marcus King and Bob Weir interviewed, you know, just, just this month, right? So, I also do their Guitar Player Presents, uh, events, which means essentially I keep an eye on who's coming to town, uh, the whole San Francisco Bay area, and then we'll work with the club, whether it's Yoshis or the Warfield or wherever, to say, I've been building this mailing list for twelve years and I can help you bring great players to see great players. And so, that's, that continues to go strong, and Jim Campolongo was always the, he would come home for the holidays and we would promote him, and it built up from the make-out room to where he was selling out Yoshis in San Francisco. Uh, so, that, that brought me here in the first place. Um, I have also played at the Concert in the Park with my Allman Brothers Tribute Band. I've played over at the Marina and at the Club Twenty-three and the Seven Miles and the Blues Jam, and over at the Davis House and at the Block Party, I think where I met you, Cliff, uh, Dave and I. So, I've, I've got a somewhat of an idea of what happens here locally and, and a definitely, uh, regionally, uh, just through the Guitar Player Presents and as a co-founder of the Guitar Fish Festival. So, the Guitar Fish Festival is a festival that takes up, uh, place up near Tahoe at the Cisco Grove Campground every, the last weekend of July for the last, this will be the seventh year. And that's really put on by a Tahoe promoter who was interested in the fact that I had written, uh, a musical, a family-oriented musical called The Guitar Fish Adventures about an underwater band led by a guitar fish. There really is, is such a thing native to these waters. And the guitar fish cruises around and they learn about funky music. Bootsy Collins wrote the foreword, and it has an environmental message. It teaches kids about taking care of the oceans and what fish they eat and all that kind of thing. So, the Guitar Fish Festival blossomed into this thing where we, we now run out the whole campground of Cisco Grove. And in addition to playing on the other stages and stuff, I run the family camp stage, which we call the Starfish Stage. And the Starfish Stage is kind of a, a combination of, of bands and edutainment, if you will, for, for, for the kids, including performing The Guitar Fish Adventures, which is something I do, just kind of like a combination of Robin Williams and Jimi Hendrix, if you will. And I'll do all the character voices and, and that kind of thing. So, we take care of the kids, we give them, uh, arts and crafts, and we give them, uh, involvement in, in the, in the mu- music itself. We'll, we'll put instruments in their hands and bring them up and all that kind of thing. Yet, at the same festival, we'll have guys from P-Funk and, and, you know, the Orgone and the Pimsom Joy Time and a real funk music festival going on, or people like ALO, headlined this year from the San Francisco jam community. So, I guess that's a little bit of background on, on where I'm coming from. And also, the thing that Brisbane hasn't had. the thing that Brisbane hasn't had enough of is, is, is what I was hoping would be here when I moved here. The Twenty-three Club is closed down. And, and, boy, that was such a cool place. And I really hoped that there was gonna be a thriving music scene there. And the, and the concerts in the park are cool, but they only happen like five times a year, and it's on a Friday at a very specific time. And if you're not there, you, you kinda miss that. In fact, you guys do such a good job of blaring the sound up the mountain. If I wanna sit in my hot tub and listen to it without actually coming down, I, I can't, you know? So, the idea is from, I think that when you talk about the three different levels of what's being considered here, I don't, it doesn't sound like everybody's ready for number three. I think number one is, is probably a little small. And that some, uh, number two seems to be, you know, maybe, let's see if the price is right, you know? Let's see, let's see that, what that can be. But the thing, one of the things that's really different about what's happening in Brisbane right now is, um, I started getting phone calls from people in bands that don't play in, in little clubs and stuff, and they're recording over at this new place called Lucky Studios, right here in Brisbane. And I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. So, eventually, I went down there, and sure enough, there they are. Talking about Angelo Moore, the leader of Fishbone. I mean, this guy's on the level of a prince kinda talent. And, and there's Eric McFadden, who I can, you know, consider to be one of the greatest guitar players in the world, who plays with Eric Burden and The Animals, and is in P-Funk and tours with P-Funk and does all kinds of other things. They're recording right over here on Valley Drive at this place. So, I started recording there too. These guys are awesome. And we just made one song that's gonna come out on the Guitar Player compilation that's gonna go out through Universal. They do a beautiful job. So, all of a sudden, you're starting to see these different kinda characters walking around Brisbane, going to the, to the market and, and down the street, and it, it's, it's really exciting to me. So, as soon as this kinda, I got wind of what's going on here, I called this man, Michael Ross, who is, right now, uh, Lucky's, uh, nominated for, for a Grammy, and he's about to get a gold record in the mail, uh, uh, for, for a record he made a little while ago. So, this is really happening. And I'll say a few things about what, how I might see this day going, 'cause it's kinda similar to what goes on at Guitar Fish. Like, maybe the, the run combination here is an interesting uh, situation to think of as a, as a music festival guy, trying to figure out where the arc of the lineup is going to go. But, but clearly, y- you'd have to run this thing in a way that says, this, this could exist on its own, and it could keep some of those runners, right? And, and I think that in the beginning, you probably would wanna kick it off at sometime, on a Saturday, not a Friday. One of the most beautiful things about Brisbane is the mountain. Everybody's gotta agree on that. And one of the reasons I moved out here is 'cause it's an island of sunshine in the middle of this foggy peninsula, and I was tired of living out and dealing with that weather. So, if we could do it on a Saturday, where, where like at noon, you could start with something like a Guitar Fish Adventures kinda show, get the kids and the families in, and then say have a Battle of the Bands contest, where it's only bands from around the mountain are allowed to, to enter. And we'll judge it, and you could even record them. Uh, but they get, say, a half an hour set next. Maybe they get fifty tickets for winning. And all of a sudden, there's people there, and they're early, and there's a vibe happening. And then, I don't, I think Theresa's idea of a zydeco band is not such a bad idea, and Andre Theory's a, a great zydeco guy. I have lots of connections to New Orleans. Mikey's from New Orleans. And, uh, put that in the middle of the day, uh, Poor Man's Whiskey is a, is a band that, um, the guy that plays Greg Allman in my Allman Brothers Tribute is the leader of Poor Man's Whiskey. They can sell out the Fillmore. They play at the Great American Music Hall. Um, so, we could potentially do both those things. The Poor Man's Whiskey, the Allman Brothers Tribute Band, uh, a Brisbane All-Stars, where I might even get my landlord, Jim Campolongo, or McFadden, or Angelo, or some of these guys, and we throw together something specific that's not just a band that is always happening. But I have a lot of experience putting those kinda things together too, where you get a mishmash of different kind of awesome talents. You pick a setlist, you rehearse it, you come out and do an all-star thing at the end. So, imagine that, as kind of a day of music that people would come to, very special for Brisbane, and maybe keep some of them runners around, at least enough so that they come in, play their little thing, have a beer, hang around and give it a chance. Okay. So, I'm gonna now turn this, this over. This is Michael Ross, and, uh, he's gonna give you some ideas about how this could be different. It'd still be in the park, but, uh, he's kinda mapped it out in his head a little differently than I think anybody else might've looked at it. And he'll talk about some of the other bands and things in the booth, so, take it away, Michael.
Hi. Hi, everybody. I only made ten of these, so you're gonna have to share, all right?
Uh, Ingrid, maybe you could put it up on the screen?
Oh, you put it on the screen?
Yeah.
My name is Michael Ross. I am a producer and engineer. I have toured the world for twenty-five years. I've been nominated for a Grammy twice. I have one gold record. Um, I have put out an enormous amount of energy on learning about how to do stuff like this. Um, what I thought, when I heard about this idea, was the same reason that I came to Brisbane would be the same reason that everyone else would come down here and really get a kick out of it, is because it's one of the most physically beautiful communities in the area, and it's a relatively unknown quantity. I think everyone in my neighborhood in the Mission thinks that it's Burlingame. Um, seriously. Now, um, I'd like to just take you on a little walk around the park here. I've come to two of your events that you have on Friday nights, and I've enjoyed both of them. But for me, the idea of the way that it was facing was backwards. So, if you look down at your map, I propose that you flip the entire thing around so that you showcase the San Bruno Mountain bu- behind the stage and the city of Brisbane up behind it. So, as you come in, you'll see there's two gates in the front that are handicapped accessible sidewalks. You could come in, you could put your ticket takers at each one of these locations. The main stage would be in between them, facing away from the residences, which will allow the people that do not care about the music to escape the music. And also allow Jimmy to have to get out of his hot tub to come down and see the show. As you would come in on the, what I'm gonna call the left gate, um, you would have, uh, two ways of going. You could either walk straight out onto the field in front of the stage, or you could walk down the path through the forest where we would have bars on each side of the sidewalk, two on one, on this side, and one on the curve, as you can see. Um, as you follow the trail around, uh, uh, there's a, there's another entryway, um, that leads down onto the street that I can't remember that goes down by the basketball courts and the skate park, where I would suggest that you put your medical and your security. Um, the police and medical could headquarter there. It's easy in, easy out, um, for them in case of any kind of an emergencies. Um, within the pavilion that exists now, what I suggest would be two circles, one large and one small, with local vendors in between, or, or assembled around in two circles. Um, one of the ideas that I had was across the street from our studio complex is a, is a, a, a company that's building the most, one of the most cutting-edge vehicles on the planet. It's called Alta Motors. It's electric dirt bikes. I would suggest that they bring down their electric dirt bikes, show everybody what they got. Um, uh, and, and Monster Cables here. I mean, you guys are probably familiar with all the technological advanced stuff around here. Um, have the, have them table in the vendors, have the Conservancy for the Mountain Table, have City of Brisbane. Build, uh, two circles of tables underneath that pavilion that's kind of an information central where everybody can go and meet not only the people that are behind the tables, but the people at the tables can meet each other as well. Um, as you come out of that vendor category, along that back wall there, you would have your food set up, lions. I heard, my grandfather was a lion, by the way. But, um, uh, have them set up there. Um, have the local restaurants bring some of their fare down. Why not, right? The idea is to showcase the city. Um, as you come around the kids' area, which is already an existing kids' area, would have included within it a tent of a thing that we call the Maker Stage, which would be, um, a way, we would start the festival with the kid, oh, did, Jimmy, did you mention that kids get in free? Which is a great way to get, bring the community down off the mountain, is have kids get in free. Um, and then have this Maker Stage, which is between the bands, would be a process of encouraging kids to make stuff, to be their own creators and to, to empower them to, uh, build stuff. We could have bubble making and construction paper and costuming and whatever the local community that we could generate interest in providing. Um, I'm sure that there's more than enough people that would wanna be, get stoked about, about getting these kids stoked. And once again, connecting people to each other within the community. Um, the fencing that exists around the site is all pretty much already in place, with the exception of the back wall, which was, would be the back of the main stage. I would say that the only, um, use of street blockage that you would actually have to have would be a twelve-foot easement out on, into the street, where you could have vehicles that are, that supply the, uh, the comings and goings for the musicians, performers, vendors. Um, and then you would still have your emergency access up San Bruno, um, to go up the hill in case of any kind of emergency up that way, so the fire trucks wouldn't get in the way. Um, I think that's, pretty much covers everything. Um, if, I was gonna say, if there's any kind of glaring holes in anything that you guys see on the list, is there anything that you guys see that are glaring holes in the, in the plot? This is just a cursory, one, uh, evening stroll with me and Jimmy. So, as, if, if you accept our proposal, this will become way more detailed, and, uh, there'll be way more information for you. Um, as far as the celebrities, I guess, that we have access to right now at this moment, uh, Jane Weedlin from The Go-Gos, um, new band, is recording in my studio. And, uh, Angelo Moore from Fishbone will be in next week. There are also several other, um, I would not call them minor celebrities, but, but people that would, that have, uh, fallen in love with this. You've actually been standing next to them at the Midtown Market and ordering Chinese food next to all these people. Um, and they love it here because there's a charm that exists within this community that takes us back to old California in the eighties. Um, and my parents are from Glendale. I remember when the Orange Girls started at the mountain and went all the way to Burbank. And so, there's a spirit and an atmosphere of California that has been lost in the modern shuffle, but that's still somehow you guys have been able to retain here. And I think showcasing that as a, this as a small-town gem within reach of a big city mess, so that when people need space, they can come down here and enjoy our trails and enjoy our nature, enjoy our baylands. Um, I think would be a, would be a great effort. And I think that me and Jimmy would be really stoked to help you guys sell your vision of Brisbane. And I think that, um, we're wide open as far as any kind of comments or suggestions that you would have for us. And, um, and, uh, and really, just thanks for having us. And thanks for having me into Brisbane. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. Those were great ideas.
Thank you very much, uh, Michael, and Jimmy.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have, uh, is there any other questions that you would like to ask myself or, or Michael right now, or?
Uh, no, I don't, I, I don't have any questions. I, I mean, I appreciate that, you know, you guys actually took some time and, uh, uh, did this, you know, kind of, uh, from the subcommittee, but I would, I would suggest that, you know, that the subcommittee make a recommendation if you wanted to work with you or utilize your, your, uh, expertise and stuff like that. So, you know, I'm, you know, certainly, it's, uh, council's not at liberty to make a decision tonight or something.
Totally understood. Thank you very much.
The subcommittee's updating, and I appreciate, you know, you guys being, uh, taking the time and being very thoughtful. And Michael, you drawing up a map of what your vision is. And I think a lot of people do, would appreciate that, uh, the music would go outward instead of upward, and, you know, 'cause we do have a natural bowl and it's a, a natural amphitheater here. So, you know, certainly, we hear it with, uh, all our jet noise and stuff. But, you know, thank you, guys.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you again for putting together the time. And Michael, thank you for starting your business here in Brisbane. That's awesome. So, um, yeah, we'll definitely be in touch, uh, soon, because, uh, we know that these things take time. And we only got, uh, what, six months, less than six months to, to put it all together, so.
Yeah, so, I look forward to hearing further recommendations from the subcommittee. And it sounds like, um, at least from what Jimmy mentioned and, you know, what I've heard, that the council's interested in the second recommendation of, you know, doing sort of the, you know, the moderate-level exposure event that, you know, kind of tries to draw on people from outside of Brisbane, but not too big, um, to do something a little bit more than what we've done with Concerts in the Park.
I think that's the direction.
Okay. So, with that, um, I guess is that enough direction for staff then to move on, uh, to the next matter?
Clear as mud, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Stuart, we're gonna, you and I are gonna sign up for that fifty K. Madam Mayor, after we do the consent calendar, could we take a short break, 'cause I drank too much water?
Oh, sure. Okay, moving on to item four, consent calendar.
Um, we'll make a motion to approve A through G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, I will note that I submitted some minor typographical changes to, um, Ingrid. Uh, and I believe those have been made, the, the changes to the minutes. Um, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the consent calendar has been approved. And now, uh, we will take a five-minute break. Thank you.